Good evening. I would like to call this regular meeting of the Board of Education to order. There will be a special Board of Education meeting on Thursday, January 4th, 2024 at 7:00 PM. The next regular Board of Education meeting is on Saturday, January 6th, 2024 at 8:30 AM in the Board of Education meeting room. I'll keep my remarks very brief this evening. I'd like to thank the RTM and my fellow elected officials for the State of the Town meeting yesterday evening. It was nice to hear what everyone else is doing and to be able to speak on behalf of the Board. Last Friday, Alan and I attended a CES breakfast with Board chairs, Board of Ed chairs, CES Board members, superintendents, and area legislators. The focus of that meeting was principally on timing and funding vis a vis how we were talking to legislators. Alan will speak more specifically about some of the topics that were covered. But it was certainly a robust discussion with our legislators. Beyond that, I'd like to wish everyone a very happy, healthy, and safe holiday season. And I'll turn the meeting over to start to public comment. Michelle, please.
Good evening. If anyone in person would like to participate in public comment, please wait for the chair to acknowledge you and can come up to the podium. You'll have up to three minutes to comment. Please state your name and address for the record. We'll start with in-person. Please come up to the podium.
All right. Just gonna see, we have a new visual timer, so you get three minutes.
I will do my best to stick to three minutes, but what I have to say is rather important. So if I go over, I'll apologize for that.
I actually, yeah, unfortunately, I'll have to cut you off at three minutes, so do your best. I hope you can speak really fast.
I will do my best.
But we certainly appreciate that what you have to say is important. Thank you.
It is important. Good evening. My name is Jason Golden. I live at 37 Richmond Drive with my wife and three boys. As I explained at the last Board of Education meeting, we've lived in Darien for about 10 years, having moved here based on the reputation and quality of the school system. While my oldest is now a sophomore at DHS, he's doing great. He suffered from bullying at MMS. It's nothing compared to the torture of my son. My middle son had to endure while attending Middlesex, and I don't want to share two recent stories with the Board about my son's bullying experience. After months of concern about bullying in his STEM class, we received an email in October from his therapist warning of severe concerns about the bullying at STEM and the impact it's having on his mental health and well-being. This was shared with the PPT and the administration of MMS, including quotes from his specialist. "I'm growing increasingly concerned about the bullying he's reporting at school and his STEM class. The past week has been extremely difficult to program." He has disclosed these incidents occurring at school and if nothing being done today in particular, he shared that there's a group of boys spreading lies about him, telling him, quote, "No one loves him. He doesn't shower. He shouldn't be depressed," and so on. "I'm growing increasingly concerned and worried about his well-being and the impact this has on his mental health. He struggles with depression. The external stressor is now causing him to experience even more stress." It took the administration over a week to respond. With a proposed IEP meeting held the following week, meaning my son missed five days of school. When they finally did grant us an IEP meeting, their safety plan was as follows: removing our son from STEM with two weeks remaining and sticking him in the library study hall instead. They were to assign a special research assignment. It was a team project. No special assignment was delivered. No action was taken to address the bullying in the classroom, despite other students corroborating the story and providing additional evidence with the group of kids who were bullying. My son is entitled to an education. MMS ignored the problem and denied him his rights. Even with his unexplained absence, he ended up getting a B in STEM, which was his lowest grade of the term. As I mentioned, on the 17th was his last day at school. He was held against his will for 90 minutes by the administration. He was forced to write down the names of the bullies who had been bothering him, despite explicit instructions both via PPT and email. I quote an email I sent to several members of the folks in this room, actually, back in October. "You do not have permission to speak to my son about the bullying incidents. Punishing the victim, especially one who suffers from depression and anxiety, by calling him to the principal's office would be cruel and thoughtless. Please do not further punish my son for being victimized and bullied." As I mentioned, on the 17th, he was having a particularly stressful day with kids, immediately bullying him and picking on his class. This is a quote. I sent this audio clip to the administration immediately after he was released from captivity. This is his recollection of what happened.
Like they just held you there or they were talking to you?
Both. They held me there and they were talking to me and they weren't letting me... Mom, you and until I gave them like the names of everyone who was bothering me and they said that they would interview a bunch of kids in my classes, even though I asked them not to do that.
Just as a side, we pulled my son out after class, immediately asked for an outplacement via IEP. We were denied immediately. To my knowledge, no action or investigation was taken against the students who named. He was forced to write down. The administration did not either apologize after we met or explain why my son was held against his will.
Mr. Golden, we have additional public comment at the end of the meeting.
Got it. Okay.
If you'd like to finish. We certainly respect that the words of every constituent up here are important.
This is my final statement. The Board of Education needs to recognize the systemic problem with bullying at Middlesex and launch an investigation and explore all options to restore students have a safe environment to learn. My son suffered tremendously at Middlesex. And I share these stories to help prevent anyone else's kid from suffering the same way. The Board should explore replacing the staff, both at MMS and the Special Education Department, with professionals to take education and child safety seriously. Please don't allow bullying to be swept under the rug by the staff at MMS and the people sitting in this room. Thank you.
Anyone else in the audience?
If anyone online would like to participate, please use the raised hand icon. There are no raised hands at this time.
Superintendent's report. Alan?
Yeah, good evening, everyone. And congratulations to the boys' football team at the weekend. That was a great performance and it was a great game and for both teams, actually, and the tremendous effort by both teams. I think the kids enjoyed the experience up there, ranch or field. Quite the opportunity. Thank you for everyone who traveled up. Since the last time we spoke, I just want to recognize the PTOs for actually recognizing National Special Education Day, for the wonderful work of our special education teachers, support services, and related staff. Thank you for all you do and those personal things that you did did not go unnoticed on that particular day, so thank you. Thanks also to Mr. McTomin for her inaugural State of the Town address last night. It's not always you get the opportunity to do that, so thank you. And represented the Board and the school system tremendously well. Regarding the CES breakfast, it was a lively affair. It was fairly well-attended, actually very well-attended. Topics included additional funding for special education. Actually, the use of technology and cell phones come up. State collaboration for K-3 reading programs. Assistance with teacher shortages, increased mental health support, and perhaps bundle and altogether relief from state mandates. And so we were pleased to be represented at that meeting and participated accordingly. There are some, just since it says K-3 reading, there are some districts that are more for the better term, fired up about this than others. That was really the topic of the day. Thanks also to Mr. Monret, the custodians and principals, for their tour of the facilities last Saturday also. That was a good day out that we had. Shout out to Channel 79. Thank you to their staff and it is already posted. I think Dennis deserves a wee recognition that he suggested that and it does make sense to have those capital projects previewed in advance. Thank you to all our parents and our student staff for the amount of food drives and toy drives that are happening around the district. They sort of go unnoticed a little bit for those who are less fortunate. But one of the characteristics of our district and our town is service and care for others and it's well and duly noted during this holiday period. Talking of which, there's been a lot of musical performances happening around the district from the high school right down to elementary schools. It's just a wonderful celebration if you're so inclined to want a wee bit of levity and a nice night out. You can do that. And I would point to December 19th at 7 o'clock, which is a holiday concert, which high school students and middle school students will participate in. But my suggestion to you is that you get there early because it's very, very popular. I also want to thank the home staff for facilitating the first instructional rounds in the district for administration and staff. This is a model actually modeled after the medical professions of doing rounds. And the focus is on obviously teaching, improving teaching and learning. And we have a second instructional rounds process at the high school this coming Monday. Mrs. Strayton and Mrs. Droler, Dr. Fettigan and I met with several of the town's preschool providers today as we prepare for our families for new kindergarten legislation. We will continue to liaison with those providers, actually for the remainder of the year. I think that's a very positive thing. This week, our kindergarten committee is hosting an information session for families requesting, those who are requesting an exception from the kindergarten age requirement. So we are liaising with our families and our various providers in town. The parent and staff focus groups are being rescheduled for the week of January 15th. That communication will go out in my communication in terms of how parents can actually participate for those particular focus groups. As Mr. McTomin noted, the superintendent's budget is presented on January 4th. And just for Board purposes, it's not the practice to include the actual materials because usually only one item in that night and usually it gets presented right at the night. So I'll present that on the even of the 4th. We do not have a facilities meeting this particular week. And like Jilla, I'd like to wish your families and staff are happy and relaxed in the holiday season.
Alan, that kindergarten notice went out to all the elementary schools, correct?
Yes.
So that's how people are finding out about it, what you're telling the preschools and you noticed all elementary schools. Thank you. Student representative reports. Brenna and Swaha.
Hi, everyone. Good evening. We want to once again congratulate our football team on such a great performance and such a great show of sportsmanship that we received some compliments from on the field and off the field. And another round of congratulations are in order to all of our musical ensembles. It was a lovely couple of performances. And as Dr. Adley pointed out, we've got another one coming up soon that we hope to see everyone in attendance for to rein in the holiday spirit. And our spring production of Hello, Dolly is now officially underway, as well as Theater 308 hosting their Home for the Holidays cabaret, which is something new and fun. And tickets are on sale for that as well. And yeah.
Good evening. So our winter break is approaching for our Darien High School students, so we have a lot of tests and last minute assignments in the next couple of days. The student government has been planning events for next week to kind of counteract that stress. We have a spirit week with games, caroling, and holiday movies playing in the Wellness Center. And last week, we had animals from the Darien Nature Center come to our Wellness Center. Our friend, like my friends, and I particularly liked a hedgehog that was there. It was really cute. And lastly, stress levels for seniors especially are high this week because a lot of early action and early decision results for colleges are coming out in the next couple of days. So we wish them the best of luck.
Thank you both for noting all of those things. Those are important. Brenna, would you remind us if you know the date for the cabaret that you mentioned?
Yeah, that will be on the 21st.
Thank you. Approval of the minutes. We have a motion to approve the minutes of the special meeting and regular meeting held on November 28th, 2023. Dennis seconded by Julie. All those in favor? That is unanimous. Oh, sorry. Noes? Abstentions? Seeny? Board committee reports. Dennis?
So as Dr. Adley said, on the 9th of December, we had a tour of the schools for capital projects. This was earlier than we typically have done. I think it was well-attended and I think a success to have it done earlier. Again, we would like to thank Dr. Adley, Kevin Morant and his staff, the principals, the custodians, the athletic director as well for showing us the projects that are involved in each school. And just as an FYI, at our committee meeting in January, one of the topics we would like to discuss is discuss future tours of maybe doing an individual school because as parents of elementary schools, you don't get to see the four other schools. Maybe it'd be interesting to go and do a tour every five years and you get to see the entirety of all the schools or and/or see, excuse me, and/or see past capital projects to see what's been done. But again, that can be discussed at the committee, but just to give a heads up that this is something we would like to discuss at our next meeting.
Thank you. Anyone else? Sarah?
The curriculum committee met last Thursday. We talked about literacy. We talked about instructional rounds and we talked about instructional technology. Two out of those three will be discussed again tonight. Hopefully we'll hit the highlights. It was a robust two-hour meeting, so hopefully everybody got a chance to review it before we go into more discussion tonight. But thank you all.
And a couple of members of the negotiations committee met with the secretaries, part of their negotiations last week.
Katie, do you want to touch on Oxbridge in your final meeting?
The Oxbridge Building Committee will be holding a meeting on Thursday at 10:00 AM. It's a remote meeting via Zoom and it will include some of the closeout reports for the project. So that's very exciting. Thanks. Thank you.
Is that the final final or?
So the hope is that it is, but we'll see. Fair enough. Many of you probably saw the paper this morning, but the HHR committee certainly has received our updated bids and has been reviewing them over the past couple of weeks. They are something in the neighborhood of $19 million over the original appropriation. So we will be talking about that tomorrow in fairly robust detail and what that means for the project. The initial plan was to go to the Boards of Finance and Selectmen the following week in December. But the committee, we need to make, the committee will talk about it tomorrow, whether or not that's the right timeline. So I certainly will keep this board up to date. We continue to be excited about the projects and the prospect of renovating these schools, working on these schools, but certainly have a lot to discuss. All right. Presentations and discussions, literacy program update, Dr. Fettigan and Ms. Droler.
Okay, good evening, everyone. I first want to thank Sarah and the other Board members who are a part of the Curriculum Committee. It was a robust conversation at the end of last week. We look forward to providing highlights tonight and we're grateful for the continued dialogue about next steps within our district. I also want to thank Mrs. Droler for the tremendous work that I know she led before my arrival to District as waiver was a very lengthy and arduous process. And I know that she really, really was responsible for the yeoman's task of that. And I also want to just recognize, and I think, you know, Katie's point was well-taken before, that we have teachers that are working very hard, day in and day out, within our school system to provide the very best learning experiences for our students. So our comments tonight will also want to reinforce the excellent instructional practices that have been taking place in our district and continue to take place. We did talk about during the Curriculum Committee meeting on Thursday that we're really looking at this waiver update and the feedback from the state as an opportunity to think about what we offer in District with regard to curricula, the resources that we use, our instructional methodologies, how we assess for learning, and the professional learning that we provide for our staff. So we'll talk a little bit more about how we're going to view this as an opportunity and as we approach some of our next steps. So one of the things that, again, we talked about this at Curriculum Committee that you'll get used to seeing is constantly revisiting our core values, thinking about our mission and vision. So whenever we're talking about curriculum, shift in curriculum, shift in instructional practices or assessing for learning, we should always be going back to anchoring our conversation to the core values of the district and our district mission and vision. That will help guide our decision-making. We did receive the waiver decision. So for anyone who missed the robust conversation at Curriculum Committee, we were granted a transitional waiver. So either districts received a full waiver, a partial waiver, a transitional waiver, or just no approval at all. This transitional waiver means that we need to replace some parts of our literacy program. So we will go into more detail about what that is. Just as a reminder, this is legislative action by the state and that we have to have an approved compendium of models from our reading curriculum in place by July 1st, 2025. It should also be noted that when the waiver was submitted, there were only six programs that were available for districts to select from. And throughout this waiver process, that list has expanded greatly. It's pages long now. So that's what they're referring to when they say a comprehensive compendium of curriculum models. So at this point, Mrs. Droler is going to let us know where we received approval and some parts of our program that we'll continue to explore for continued improvement.
And I'm just going to highlight this because we shared this on Thursday, but our waiver did need approval in phonemic awareness and phonics. We use Hegarty, we use foundations, we use decodable texts for practice. We did not receive approval in fluency, vocabulary, and comprehension. And just some of the strategies, fluency is taught through foundations, through whole-class instruction, through repeated reading, which is the most research-based, and some of these other strategies. Vocabulary, I know I'm going fast, Michelle. Vocabulary, again, these are some of our research-based instructional methods that we're currently using that were included in our waiver, the interactive read-aloud, the orthographic mapping, where we use explicit instruction and word walls, reading comprehension as well, learning progressions, explicit instruction, practice, where students are matched with text, read-aloud plans and discourse, because we know comprehension is social. Writing was another area that we got some feedback on. And again, our explicit instruction through daily mini lessons, students do write across genres. They use mentor texts, they use rubrics, checklists, exemplars, learning progressions, and their learning strategies and the qualities of effective writing. So according to the feedback tool, these are the areas where they provided some more specific feedback. And again, the way we listed this out was the curricular area, the feedback, our current practice, and next steps. So in these areas of letter naming fluency, this is an area where we are looking at a new resource. Same with vocabulary. And again, this just reiterates the instructional practices I shared and reading comprehension as well. And I also indicated in writing, although that wasn't one of the components of the reading foundations, that was an area that we are, we received some feedback on and we are looking to enhance our practice in grammar. So just a very quick overview of the feedback and what's happening. And now we'll get into just next steps. We did flesh this out a little bit.
Okay. So, and I apologize if this appears this way. It doesn't on my screen. So I'm not sure how this printed this way, but Julie and I noticed this before and I looked in a panic, but it looks correct on our screen. So at any rate, we did have to provide some revisions to the ARPA Right to Read grant, which was much easier to do now that there's an expanded list of resources. We're in continued conversation with the state about both the waiver, the waiver decision and also about the grant approval process. And one of the things that will be tricky for us moving forward, because budget seasons start so early in school systems, is really being able to name particular resources that we would admit to, right, for the year ahead, even in a pilot. So one of the things that we'll be looking to do is, is look at the list of resources that are approved by the state and engage teachers and administrators and all stakeholders, really, in a process of looking at those resources and how they fit with our current curricula. Because we do have parts of the curricula, namely for phonics and phonemic awareness, that our current resources are approved. So what we'll have to do during both the budget process, and we won't know about the grant for several, you know, likely several months, is think about earmarking funds, and we'll have to talk more with the Board about this, for some of the areas where we need to have improvement. We've talked about vocabulary, for example, and reading comprehension and writing, and indicate that we're going to be exploring those resources so that we can involve teachers in that decision-making. So one of the things the Curriculum Committee asked us to do when we last met was to flesh out some more detailed next steps in a timeline. We did that to some extent, but that was on Thursday and we had to have the packet ready, you know, on Friday, the very next day. So please know that next steps and timeline will have many more details attached to them in the near future and as we move forward. At any rate, we are looking to consider the best practices that are currently in place and others that would be research-based. We will establish a committee. It's incredibly important that there be teacher voice in this process of looking at resources that we have been using in District, looking at our curricula framework as it is and getting their feedback and how that's going, what's working, and considering their feedback in combination with feedback from the state and making decisions moving forward. We'll continue to network with other districts. We are always engaging in conversation with the state. We actually have a meeting with the state on Thursday where we'll be able to seek additional feedback on the rubric that they've provided to us. We are going to obviously continue to collaborate with our colleagues in SESS. It's important to learn what our students' experience has been when they have met with challenge in the core so we can learn how to improve in the core from our friends in SESS. We also are in touch with our colleagues and will continue to be at the 612 level because it's important to see what students are taking with them as they approach middle school and high school and what we can learn from our colleagues who are meeting them there about their readiness and where we really need to shore up some areas where students might be arriving with deficit. So we can address that in the core at the elementary level. We'll continue to engage with data cycles. I know that we will be sharing with the Board an update on SRBI come January and thinking about our work to improve that process. We are also going to be looking at the resources that have been approved and added to that list, and they have been flooding into District. We've gotten other resources, actually just this past week, that we're starting to take a look at. We'll be looking to take site visits so that we can talk with educators who are actually implementing these resources in real time because it's important to get kind of educator firsthand experience about how these resources are working for them in classrooms, maybe in other districts around the state. And of course, develop a communications plan. And one of the things that we're committing to, of course, is keeping the Board apprised through these Board meetings and the Curriculum Committee each month so that there is constant communication about our work in this area. So this draft timeline just outlines very, very kind of broadly what we're looking to do for the remainder of this month, for the beginning of winter and going into spring. And so it's our hope that as we approach the year ahead, we would have recommendations to plan for a pilot in the upcoming school year. And we would want to offer a presentation to the Board before, obviously, before that happens so that you can understand all the curricular resources that we're looking at, the process that we're using, and how teacher voice is being used to support that decision-making. So the additional considerations again, it will be a little bit tricky to support this process with the budget because budgets were already starting to be built in October and those decisions, while we go kind of through May in the budget process, we will need some time to really think, be intentional about how we explore the resources and also think about how these resources fit with our current program and model. We talked about this before. Anytime you look at curricula, you have to consider instructional strategies and you have to consider how you assess for learning. And you have to consider the professional learning that you provide for the educators who are implementing the curriculum and instruction. So that all takes time and really thoughtful, intentional planning. And we will, of course, be engaging again in a very thorough curriculum review process. So we'll take the feedback from the state, but also feedback from our teachers or who have been implementing our current curricula. We'll also be looking at data. Those will all be factors that really are considered as we move forward in decision-making. And so we will be happy to answer any questions that the Board may have at this time.
Thank you for taking the feedback from the committee and crafting what you presented today. I think it was helpful to do it in this way. I'll open it to Board questions and comments. Sarah?
I'll just share, echo a few things that I said on Thursday morning. You know, I think sometimes there's a little bit of surprise when you see the big red not approved. But we already have a very strong literacy program, but we know that there is more work to be done and we know that this program can be strengthened. And to what Amy said, this is an opportunity for us to use so. And the most important thing in any school is the human capital within the buildings. So we need to be very cautious that we do not take this and say, this is our teacher's fault, right? It is not. Absolutely not. Our teachers are wonderful. We have some of the best in the business in our schools. So I just want to be sure that we all recognize that this has nothing to do with the work, the good work that the teachers are doing in the classrooms on a daily basis. I also just want to echo what Amy was saying about how teacher input is very important in this. And I think we all know as a Board that we want to hear from a lot of different people and a lot of different, get a lot of different feedback. So thank you for that. A quick question that I kind of asked on Thursday, but I'm not sure, you know. So now your focus, elementary focus is literacy, right? What does that push off? And do we need to be concerned about anything that we were thinking about that we may have been doing next year that now gets to be, you know, on the back burner? Is that a concern or are other areas, are we in a good place?
So that's a tricky question to answer, I think, because... So that's a tricky question to answer, I think, because everything's important. So, you know, it's hard to say when you push off the work in the area of mathematics, because literacy is such a focus. But we also know that we have to think very carefully and thoughtfully about the bandwidth for our staff in order to execute really well. We have to kind of not only involve them in decision-making, but pace our work. And so that's a difficult question to answer right now, and certainly one that Mrs. Droller and I want to involve our administrative colleagues in and also our teachers. So that will be part of the process. And there, it also might be possible that we pace our work differently K2 or K3 and 4, 5. That's another way to look at it, because really, most of this legislation and waiver has to do with K3 literacy. But certainly, as you know, and as we, I think, talked a little bit about during the curriculum committee meeting, you can't just look at only K3 literacy without thinking about what happens all the way up through grade 12. So we will certainly be looking to come back to the curriculum committee and the full board with decisions that are made around that question. It's a really important one.
And to the budget question, you know, I think this will definitely talk about this more in January. But, you know, the nine of us kind of have to be cognizant that there may, we may not necessarily know exactly what we are approving because of the, the time crunch that we are in. So just, you know, keep your, keep your eyes open as we walk, go into that discussion.
Sure. I would just say that our teachers still need professional development and good instructional practice. It will be good instructional practice, but we'll also be very sensitive to where we're putting their resources and what we're continuing to support or not support. That makes sense to.
I have a couple, but Julie, go ahead.
Thank you. This might be clumsy. Bear with me. So thank you. This is a lot of information. Can you help me understand better, when I look, for example, at a curricular area, I have vocabulary on my screen and the CSDE feedback and then the DPS current practice. Help me talk through, or let me throw something out and tell me if I'm right or wrong. Is the next level of work, understanding where the state feedback versus our current practices come together or don't come together? I'm not, I'm having trouble figuring out how to wrap my head around the feedback and then this list of what we're doing at the moment.
I think the next level of work is finding a resource.
But do we know what we're trying to meet? Like, if we have all of these resources already, do we know where those aren't measuring up that in connection with the feedback from the state?
I think in terms of vocabulary, and we have felt this as well even before this feedback, we do need a more explicit scope and sequence. We have the instructional strategies. They're done through read aloud in content area, but we want to be more explicit so that, and systematic, so that all students across a grade level get a consistent experience. And we know that we can't teach every word, so there are some like priority words that we need to identify, and some of the, some programs do that.
We know that vocabulary is so important to support reading comprehension. So in addition to the state feedback, I'd say it will be very important for us to also have feedback from our teachers, and also, I think especially this is where focusing on collaboration with SESS and our 612 colleagues, what are students struggling with with regard to vocabulary even as they move through the grade levels. So it's not only the feedback from the state. I think that's a piece of it. But part of it is also learning from what our experience, I think, has been here, from our staff and our student outcomes.
Okay. And I guess the, sorry, if I can just, I'm trying to wrap my head around that because I want to make sure, because obviously we have to be supportive and understanding how we're working through all of this, because we have to do this quickly and well, to be ready for what we need to see next and how we're trying to evaluate and give input and feedback as we move through this. So that's.
Something that's important that I think maybe you're getting at a little bit too, is that it's not just about adding another program. So it's, it's the teacher that is the special sauce of what happens in the classroom, because the teacher makes decisions about what the child needs based on the child right in front of them there in the moment. But it's also important to think, we're not just adding a program, because there are multiple resources that are used. So we have to thoughtfully plan and intentionally plan how we fit all of those together to have a very comprehensive program.
And also, one other thing, there are best practices aligned to each of these components. So we need to make sure first that, like, what do we believe about these best practices? And how are we making sure that anything that we choose is aligned with that?
And also that there's a level of rigor, because some of the programs don't demonstrate that. So we don't want to lower expectations. Want to be very, very careful of that.
I appreciate a lot of the methodology that's being outlined, but backing up to Julie's original question, which was sort of what do we need to do in each area? It was helpful to hear that in vocabulary, what we're looking at is scope and sequence. Is it similar in each of the categories? Can we quickly pop through them and talk about what we're looking at in each of the, for each of those items?
Yeah.
I, I'll be honest with you. It's, it's hard to specifically identify this, because in terms of fluency and reading comprehension, I do believe that that's a strength of our practice. Our students, I mean, our smarter balance scores are what they are, because that's 100% a reading comprehension test. And our kids read, they read, they read a lot. They read from a variety of genres. We teach explicitly. We use learning progressions and tools and visual aids and those strategies that I talked about for fluency. Repeated reading is the number one research-based strategy. We have shared reading. We have explicit plans. So we need to find a, a resource that matches or enhances that in some way.
Okay. What about in reading comprehension?
That, that reading comprehension, it's, it's strategy instruction. And it's small group. Small group is really the most important thing, that students are receiving small group instruction based, that's, that's aligned with data.
Okay.
There will, we will also be able to look, for example, at the smarter balance assessment and do, drill down into the strands and be able to look at where our students may have been struggling and coordinate those data points with what teachers are seeing in the classroom. For our students who receive special education services in the area of reading, we can coordinate, triangulate that data, so we know specifically where we might have some gaps. So that will be part, part of an analysis.
Okay. I, I see you, Shirley, ask these and then I see.
I just wanted to add one thing to it. I think that answers Julie's question and yours. And this, tell me if this is fair to say, Amy, Julie. It's really moving from implicit instruction to explicit, explicit instruction. So many of the tools that are currently being used are really implicit. We don't necessarily probe or ask specific questions. And I think if the board's able just to understand when you go from implicit to explicit, that's what you're really doing. You're probing, you're using resources that really ask those questions about, show me what your comprehension is. You know, examples of getting the main idea, direct conclusions, using text and, and understanding that. The same way in using it for, and I agree, comprehension is a measurable test for Sback, but asking explicit questions again. So it's really about probing and explicit instruction versus currently implicit instruction in those three areas.
Thank you. That's helpful. Robin?
I know this is a very, it's a complex process, and you're just now getting a lot of the resources on the list of the potential programs we could use. What I wanted to ask about is, because when you look at the, the state Sback scores, which shows all of the districts, and I think how they did it was the percentage of students that had a level three or four. So Darien was number five in the state. But if you look at the list of the districts that were actually approved with this waiver, quite a number of them were in the bottom 10% of the state. And the question I have is if we are comfortable that the resources that the state is telling us we can choose from will hopefully not decrease our level of curricular excellence that we currently have, because the outcomes, I think, are incredibly important. And hopefully, I don't know if there's a possibility to have dialogue with the state about making sure that whatever we do end up using is going to not only meet our, our, you know, the learners that need, that have more challenges, but also make sure that we're also achieving what we want to in terms of our district and challenging those learners that are more against.
And I can appreciate that. That was, that was my wrong when I said without compromising the level of rigor. That's something that we, you know, we won't be able to, we couldn't compromise on.
But you said they have expanded the list significantly. I know you haven't had a lot of time yet to kind of explore that, but hopefully, I'm hopeful that maybe those resources might have more, something that might be a good fit with what we would hopefully like to achieve.
Let me add on to Robin's question. If you run into something that, where it's, what the state provides does not bring us to the standard that we wish to achieve, what will you do?
We will be exploring the resources given committee, with the curriculum committee throughout. So there would be ongoing conversations. So we won't get to the end of the year and have that be a surprise. That would be a conversation that we would be having throughout the weeks and months ahead. So really, it's, it's hard to answer. We haven't been able to explore each of the resources yet in the depth that we'd like to. We have certainly seen some that we would not recommend coming over to the board. They don't represent a level of rigor and deep thinking for our students. They're much more low in nature. And so we will move on and we'll, you know, we're continuing to look at others. We're also talking with our colleagues throughout the jury and throughout the state to see what other people are thinking also about the resources and how they might fit. So we'll be, the short-term interest is really going to come back to the board and sharing information about what we're finding and what we see as strengths of a program that could enhance that we have or, you know, concerns and why we maybe not recommend that.
Yeah, building on that as well, because I had a similar, similar train of thought with this is, are these, are these new programs that have been identified, are they, are they fairly new? Or have they, have they have data behind them and, and as well, like, I'm nervous about A1 pilot? And can we do, again, I know it's going to be more money, but maybe it has to be multiple pilots in order to flesh this out, make sure we're, we're trying to check a box to do something properly, but also educate, not, not lower our standards for our students' education.
For sure. I should, maybe if it's verified, it would likely not be a one single resource pilot. So the idea would be to bring maybe multiple resources in at the committee setting and then think about intentionally how you approach those across schools and grade levels, so that we can get feedback across the work resources.
I think it's worth repeating too, that we're not throwing everything out and starting from scratch, that we're really looking at areas that we can approve upon. Hopefully, just from our own critical review, as we are year after year, always looking to do things better. But specifically, you know, with this opportunity from the state, taking their feedback in the specific areas. So I'm, I'm happy that we have the opportunity to do this, and I hope that it's something we always continue to do. I did want to just raise a point that I don't think was discussed at the curriculum. And perhaps it's not really something to, that can be answered tonight, but more just a point to consider is, you know, as we're talking about resources available and comparing to the performances of other districts across the state, I do think it's important for us to keep in mind that, that there are a lot of resources available to families in our district, even those outside of DPS. And so I do think that's an important consideration for us to keep as well into understanding what our students and family might be doing to supplement outside. Test scores can certainly reflect some of those additional resources. And it would be good to know if, if maybe some of our families also felt that there were areas, you know, that they needed to shore up on their own. Greg, it's, Greg. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. I guess first just thank, thank you very much for the, the follow-up from the meeting on Thursday. I think that some of the stuff you added to the presentation is great. It's a really good step in the right direction in terms of putting some processes in place to address all this. I, I do really like the teacher involvement elements of this to identify both specific areas that we can improve upon, but also how the existing teacher's college program is working. You know, kind of test the temperature there, and if they have a view as to some of these other programs that have been added or contemplating, or being contemplated to be added. To just see what the teacher's view of that is, both in terms of like how it's working, if there's areas that we think are missing, and then in addition to that, like, how complicated is it going to be to try to implement some of these things from their perspective? I think another point that I would just raise is with respect to the teacher's college program, just understanding like how that's working, you know, when we're thinking about asking for research on some of the new programs, is there research on the teacher's college program that says that it's effective? And then more specifically, I know we talked about this on Thursday, just in terms of special needs, including those who are either dyslexic or have other reading comprehension issues or writing disabilities. How do these play into that? You know, we've obviously seen an uptick in the IEPs, and I think we were collecting some data with respect to literacy IEPs specifically to understand if there's been an uptick in that, but just seeing how that played out with respect to this overall topic.
That is definitely part of our plan. Shirley and Julie will collaborate very closely with this book. I would say, and to you, this is really Shirley's area of expertise, but to work specifically into what are the goals and objectives. So discreetly, what are some of the children or my contestants' areas?
Just a fair wee bit of, one of the things that we need to do, and the two experts here who are in early literacy, will be looking for, from the state department, is really to understand what they said, and do we understand what that means versus what we have? I mean, that's one of the big purposes of, of this meeting. But there's complexities, complexities to this as well, because we are in earnest to seek more information and to be very open-minded about it. But at the same time, I don't think you expect me to go and take the reading programs from Waterbury, Torrington, Hartford, with all due respect, right? If you take somewhere like Vernon, Vernon is, recognizes this year as the National Blue Ribbon School. It was profiled by the State Department of Education for its Sback scores, and it didn't give it, it, it didn't, it wasn't approved for its award. I mean, it's just, it's just, there's, there's a lot of complexities to it. I'll rely on the professional staff to navigate us through it. I'm not excusing anything, okay? But I'm just saying it's, it's, it's just a challenge, and we'll, we'll deal with it thoughtfully, and, but it's just not as simple as take a, take a program off the shelf. Like, I mean, we just can't do that.
Will you remind us of sort of what that breakdown was? What, we have a sense of how many districts were approved, transitionally approved, not approved at all?
Yeah, there's, I think it was about 86 districts. Seventeen of them met, met expectations, got approval, and some of those I've just shared with, shared with you. I think there was 20, I think there was 25 did not get approval, and then the rest were either partially or.
Ellen, what document is that for reference?
You do not have it here. I can forward it to everybody.
Yeah, could we post that? Actually, that'd be very helpful.
Sure, yeah.
Okay. Sarah?
And so I sense, and I hear your frustration, Ellen, and I share your frustration, and I don't think it makes a whole lot of sense, you know, if you just look at it. Can you speak a little to, unfortunately, I couldn't attend the breakfast on Friday, but what are your peers saying? What, you know, what is the rest of Dirk A. doing? I feel like we've done a really good job in the last 10 days of kind of figuring out our pathway and going forward. But can you just give a little sense of what other districts in our predicament are doing?
I think there's a sense, maybe the preponderance of sense of, we shouldn't be, we shouldn't be required to change anything. I mean, I think that's really, for, for most of the districts who were represented, certainly Dirk A. districts who were not approved, they're frustrated they're not approved. I think we're going to, a wee bit more measured, a wee bit more reflective about it, a wee bit more open-minded about it. I think from the superintendents to their boards, they're frustrated and they feel that the TC program that they have or the tenants of that should be actually approved. So I think that's really, I think people are also waiting for an appeal process to be articulated, another appeal process to be articulated. I think that was a general tentative.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think Westport, who was not approved, was very firm in requesting of the legislators a commitment that morning that there would be some sort of stay on this legislation to, I mean, stay is the wrong word, but to enable districts to respond. If the Dirk A, Wilton, you have to help me out, Ellen, Wilton and Westport were not approved. Ridgefield was not, that's right. She was quite unhappy. New Canaan was also provisional, like us. Yeah.
Number one Sback, I see.
Yeah. So I would say across the board, there was not a superintendent or a board member who was happy with this process in my, in my read of the room. There could have been someone in there, but if they were, they were quiet.
Is that what you meant by robust?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yes. Shirley, do you have a second?
If I may just answer Mr. Grambling's question earlier also. I know Amy did Mr. Grambling, but I know when you responded to dyslexic behaviors, just so you know, that part of our inquiry will also be looking at many of the areas of literacy, in fact, all the areas of literacy, but phonology, fluency, orthography, decoding, encoding, those are all what we're looking for in our reading program, and those are characteristics of dyslexia. those are all what we're looking for in our reading program and those are characteristics of dyslexia. So know that we're targeting those and looking at materials and resources that support that for all learners.
Thank you. I, I appreciate that Mr. Grambling asked the question. I have heard it repeated a number of ways. So I'm, I'm grateful to hear that that is a part of the look. I think it's a very important part of the look and something that we'll be interested in here, but also that our community is interested in understanding.
John.
So if I, and I don't know if you know the answer, but you look at the S P X scores through twenty-one, twenty-two and ours remains consistent in, in the most recent report you gave, but I look at Eastford School District, New Canaan, Chester Regional School District, 12th, and Darien School District, the top three percentile, or I'm sorry, state percentile. Are any of them using what the state is requiring as part of this right to read, top-down legislation? Do we know?
Well, certainly no, New Canaan is not.
And by the way, just so the public.
They're not.
Sorry. Yeah, I mean, again, New Canaan is ranked, I don't know what Eastford is, I think it's a very small district, but New Canaan is ranked number one in the twenty-one, twenty-two. So I guess the point I was trying to, to make, I heard the word quickly before and I, I understand based on the legislation, programs by July first, twenty twenty-five, but I want to be really methodical if we can. I, I don't think speed's going to be an attribute here. Sounds like there's a lot of pushback already. Ironically, I don't think at the legislative breakfast, the sponsor was there to hear the pushback, correct?
Correct.
So I guess I would just plead that because we are in the top three percentile, we take things very methodically, thoughtfully, not quick. The other question I had, there's a reference in the letter to completed waiver application tool. You guys have a, and ladies have a, all your slides have quotes, I think, from that tool. So if I look at the DPS curriculum model or program, is, is that a direct quote? So if I go to the one that says, does not represent various cultures' perspectives, promote cultural affirmation? So that's exact quotes from the tool. Is there any way we can provide a link to that tool to the public or is that something more internal?
We, we can provide a system. Extremely hard to read, mind you, but yes, yes, we can, we can.
Oh, I love getting into this stuff. Okay, but.
Yes, it's reflected here, but yes, we can, we can provide.
Okay, but these are exact quotes because I did get a question earlier today whether or not this was your thoughts reflecting on what they said. But those are exact quotes. Okay. And then the C S D E feedback, is that an exact quote too, or is that your kind of summary of what the quote is?
Yes.
And then your commentary is the DPS current practice. Thank you.
I just want to bring us back to the couple of comments that we opened with and, and that just being that, you know, a program in a box is not how Darien designs its curriculum and that, you know, programs are not curriculum, that teachers are the ones that teach and that we're confident in our teachers. So I want to remind everyone of that. And I want to reiterate my hope that we continue to look at this as an opportunity to build on a program and to strengthen it as opposed to maybe being defensive or, or looking for an argument. And I would just reiterate again to the point of, you know, our, our faculty being the ones who teach the reading, you know, just how important it is to engage them in, in this conversation to make sure that, you know, we are getting their feedback on, on what they think works, on where they think, you know, certain aspects can be shored up, specifically professional development. You know, it's, it's really their time and, you know, the staff that I've talked to concerning professional development are, are excited to learn new things and implement them, but they're busy. And if we're pulling them out of, you know, in front of their students, we, we really want to make sure it's worth it. So I just want to reiterate those points that, that those are really the focus of strengthening a solid program going forward.
And I think some of this is not a surprise to us. Like we knew that our vocabulary program was, was not super strong. And had you all had planned to bring us something in this budget for vocabulary to begin with. So, you know, this is not necessarily huge news to us. It is, I would, I love the word opportunity. It's an opportunity to strengthen our already stronger. Can you clarify, I think Sarah, you asked it early, but which of these areas that were identified are ones that we were already planning to look at?
We're already planning to, vocabulary was definitely a part of our plan. There was some in the budget. We already have elements of each of these other things that are more defined, each of these other areas in the current curriculum, but I would say, and it's fair to say this is a show that we want to be looking at these areas anyway. We named vocabulary in the budget because we probably need a different resource for that explicitly. We weren't as ready on any other areas to name it.
And grammar. We, we were going to look at our, the grammar component of our writing program.
Okay, and it's not included in here?
Well, writing is.
Writing is.
Yeah.
So will we continue to do that grammar work?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Good. Glad to hear that. Okay. Any other questions or comments? David.
Hi, thank you. John was talking earlier to the smarter balance assessment data and just a question there. I don't know, better term, it's sort of this COVID cohort, maybe it will be our class of twenty thirty, twenty thirty-three, somewhere in there. The kids who started out on screens and video. I mean, there's not a lot of data gleaned here, but are we seeing any trends with sort of those kids or that cohort? Aside from English as well, are we seeing challenges? Are we seeing foundations that perhaps were not built or need to be built stronger than they were, given the environment they set out they're learning in? And if so, what are we doing to look at that and perhaps evaluate and take steps to it later to address that? We wanted to follow up for that question. The other question I had, and not really teaching to the test, but we heard a lot of testimony time talking from our department chairs last summer on the curriculum committee. And I noticed that this happened before you got here, Amy, and I know the waivers and process before you got here. But to my mind, if we knew that we had this waiver process, we knew what the state was looking for and we had, department chairs and others who spent a lot of time working and represent us, they spent a lot of time working to make sure our curriculum is robust and meets the needs. How did we not have a better waiver process to explain to the state that we're actually meeting the needs of our learners? Like if we knew what the target was, how did we miss? Is what I'm trying to understand i- in that process. So I just, maybe it would have come out differently, but I don't understand, for instance, how we weren't able to articulate or, you know, what that gap is. And I'd be curious to know what the feedback would be from this process as we look to move forward and try and address the gaps that have been identified. And how we're going to use this as a feedback loop for our staff and for our department chairs themselves to realize that perhaps there's some room for improvement. The last point I just wanted to make is, I see ruler in here a little bit. There have been questions raised a number of times. We brought out ruler and S E L and other programs. Question has been asked, well, what's going to give? We're going to spend time doing these. Or are we going to have less time in English instruction, less time in mathematics instruction? So I guess the question we use, we look at and perhaps identify areas where English learning has to be increased. We're going to say perhaps maybe we need a little less ruler because we have to be focusing on English at this time. So as we do think about what needs to be expanded to address what's been identified here, don't forget to do the other part of the exercise and think perhaps what maybe we should not be focused on. Thanks.
Okay. So in summary, I think I agree, the board and administration clearly are planning to use this as an opportunity to take a look at our reading program. Clearly some of this was planned already. And it looks like there's some other areas we'll be looking at and hopefully a lot of this will end up being really good work for our district and will help us move forward. At the same time, I do think it is important to note that the feedback to legislators, that timing and funding and the role of the state continue to be really important aspects of how, how their work gets, happens, you know, putting things in too quickly, putting things without understanding the potential financial implications on districts and not carefully considering, you know, it's, it's reading today, it could be math tomorrow, it could be anything else. So those are, continue to be important considerations for all of us to keep in mind as we talk with our legislators. In terms of the things that we agreed to in, in this discussion, Alan, you're going to send us the literacy waiver results and are we also, we're also going to post that online, please? Or you can just post it and send us the link. And then also the, posting the C S D E report, please, to the website and sending us that link as well. We can probably have that done by the end of the week. Thank you. All right. That will move on to the update on technology integration. Dr. Fettigan again and Mr. Timothy McGuire.
Mr. McGuire has really only arrived, although sometimes it feels like he and I have both been here a long time in our work together. He's only arrived, I think, mid, mid, I was going to say mid-end of September. And he's made quite, I think, an impression across elementary, middle and high school in his work. I have it on my head with staff. I think one of the most important parts of, of the work that he's done so far is supporting staff directly with the use of instructional technology. So he'll provide an overview of what the last few weeks have been and what our work will be moving forward throughout the remainder of this year and into next.
Thank you so much for having me this evening. Did you want to address?
Have to note that Tim dressed down today.
I did, I did.
Because Tim is known for his shirts in the district.
Yeah, it's very true. And thank you, Dr. Adley, for giving me some time this evening.
Come properly dressed next time.
The flashing lights would have been a thing. So, thank you so much. Thank you, Board of Ed members for inviting me this evening. I'm going to take about 10 minutes of your time to share with you a short update regarding instructional technology. I am Tim McGuire, your Instructional Technology Coordinator, without the fancy shirt this evening. I got a nice blazer. I have been here almost three months, as Dr. Fettigan mentioned, and amazing things are happening in your district. And your dedication and work as members of this Board of Ed drives that success. I thank you. Before I dive into an update, I think it'll be helpful to frame what I mean by the phrase instructional technology. Broadly speaking, instructional technology refers to hardware or software that is utilized to support learning by students and staff. So a Chromebook by itself isn't instructional technology, nor is a connection to the internet. However, when I enter Kathleen Beeson's music classroom at Royal, I might see that she's using her display screen to show students a music program called Quaver. That program provides students the opportunity to create their own unique pieces of music, practice note reading, learn about famous composers and more. Quaver music has landing points for learners of all stages, opportunities to reinforce skills and create novel multimedia presentations, and it is aligned to musical instructional standards. That is instructional technology, supporting the curriculum with digital resources customizable to students' needs and interests. And I thank Kathleen introducing me to that program. So my efforts this year are framed around progression to Board of Ed-approved documents, along with continuing support of technology-related initiatives such as the Robotics After School Program. The graphic on screen represents how I see the future-ready technology plan feeding into the strategic plan, which in turn helps us fulfill the district's vision for the graduate. My point is that none of this work is standalone or separate in nature. So the future-ready technology plan was committed by a committee consisting of teachers, administrators, students and parents, starting in twenty eighteen, before my time here. And the plan has seven drivers of change. But in short, it focuses on application of technology in instruction and assessment. In my first three months here, I've prioritized four of those seven core objectives, though I assure you all that my eyes are on each element. So for example, one of the drivers is titled robust infrastructure, featuring five sub-strategies. Jeff Adams and his team have, from my perspective and experience, this area of the plan in great shape. So it's similar to the future-ready technology plan. I've identified four goals. You can see them highlighted on the screen there. Are related to my work thus far in Darien for the strategic plan. These goals, as is typical of any well-developed strategic plan, has multiple action steps with different levels of assigned responsibilities. I'm especially excited to partner with staff in support of professional learning, facilitate developing guiding documentation as related to use and integration of technology and be both the ears and voice at multiple levels for technology application and decision-making. So with that background, let me give you a status update regarding some technology integration. So this year I have had the opportunity to provide some more professional development in whole group, small group and individual sessions. I look forward to seeing that type of connected work. Prior to my arrival, I know the district developed an after-school robotics program. This program's success continues. We have thirteen advisors this year, six of whom are new, and activities at every school this year. I'm looking forward to seeing the DHS programs competition on January twentieth in Norwalk with teams in the National Havoc League Battle Bot Competition. Tickets are available online. I think it's important to mention my involvement as a member of a number of committees where I have a seat to listen and offer perspective. I'm finding every group welcoming and receptive. The District Technology Council restarted its work this year with our first meeting on December fourth. I've streamlined this group of volunteers and have a great sounding board with membership from all school levels and a mix of administrators and teachers. There's more. Later in the presentation, he gave me 10 minutes. He said, 10 minutes, man. That's it. Fifteen, I'll shoot. Later in the presentation, I'll showcase a screenshot of where we are housing work related to privacy and technology guidance, documentation for our staff, the newly created technology department webpage available through our district website. And this resource is meant to help district staff and families identify available resources and will include additional documentation for technology-specific guidance as it's developed. I've worked with Mrs. Rolder and Dr. Fettigan to develop a survey for elementary staff, which will, they will take on our next professional learning day in January. And this will generate data for us on some applications, which will in turn point to potential staff development and inform the budget. The next two slides present my considerations of what I think happens next this school year. That is not to say all the work in the previous slides is complete. For example, work on privacy agreements is ongoing and that new applications are likely to come on board while others are sunsetted. The technology survey mentioned in the last slide will help inform workshop planning, support needs and offer insight into usage of some tools driving our work in the upcoming months. And when I mention ideas such as gathered feedback, I want to emphasize that it's done with multiple stakeholders through multiple channels, including faculty meetings, surveys, one-to-one conversations, the District Technology Council emails. You get the idea. So many options. Our teaching approach must accommodate the needs and abilities of all learners. This means developing a flexible learning environment where students engage in learning in a variety of ways and students are provided options when demonstrating their learning. Technology has a role to play in UDL and the folks in pupil services are a tremendous resource. I'm eager to continue to build that partnership. The Darien staff are incredibly knowledgeable and effective at identifying what works for them and their students. I hope to better support their work through some guidance documentation, which will be developed through feedback with the District Technology Council and other stakeholders. And Jeff Adams has taken a lead on streamlining some processes. As one example, he's been working on a cost-effective approach to handle field trip forms and medical forms in a digital format. So I've begun to think about work that might occur after June, assuming you want me back. The ideas here are tentative and I'm curious about your perspectives on what the future work connected to instructional technology could or should be. When I look at our plans and the vision of the graduate, I'm hoping we can market ways to involve the technology talents of the greater community. The small example, Greg Darren at the high school and his robotics advisors recruited a couple of students to help out the elementary robotics advisor. It's a great cross-grade level opportunity for all the students involved. I'm excited working with staff directly on formal and informal training sessions. I want to emphasize that's what I love to do. I have thoughts about improving communication outreach through our website vendor. And as technology advances and innovations reach the classroom, I see the need to look for feedback on a few practices and policies and how I can support staff in technology areas such as cybersecurity and data privacy, two top emerging trends in a tech concern. The strategic plan is a number of strategy areas that will always need evaluation and support, such as curriculum revision and embedded professional development. And yes, starting probably sometime mid to late next year, we need to consider the development of a new F R T P, which I see happening at least partially through the District Technology Council. I hope that endeavor will see participation from a variety of stakeholders, including parent and maybe even student participants. This is the B T slide. The graphic I have here is meant to general, to be generalized, but may help address questions related to data and evaluation of instructional technology. And starting on the left side, and most importantly, we must be asking ourselves about our instructional objectives with any resource we are using. What are we trying to accomplish with? As teachers are looking at technology resources, there should be an eye to ease of use, compliance with privacy laws and a focus on learning. And in my role as a teacher, I've worked with products that, after I've tried them with students, I decided they didn't move the needle in a positive way for learning, or their features were distracting or confusing. That is what piloting software is all about, and I want people to try new things, just to be reflective. In all the rooms I've been in so far, it seems clear to me that teachers in Darien understand objectives and have a focus on learning. I see really positive and appropriate use of technology for instructional purposes. I want to stress that this graphic shows instruction ahead of technology. The essential idea is that technology is not driving instruction, but rather a technology resource may support quality learning and instruction. So if this staff plans to provide an instructional experience, then considers the results during and after their instruction. And oftentimes, the teacher will know right away how it went, simply from observations of students, interactions, student conversations, exit tickets, and lots of technology tools will offer immediate in-program data points. Emerging research in learning and use of technology may also influence our next steps. And from my side with decision-making, we can look at usage rates in programs like clever or administrative panels offered by many of the vendors. Let's not forget, we need that feedback from our stakeholders, and that might be through surveys or conversations in professional learning community meetings or interviews and professional development feedback. These conversations and data also help shape guidelines to provide fidelity in use. Reflecting on the results, research and stakeholder feedback drives us back to the beginning. We might use the same resources again or look to other options the next time we have similar learning objectives. I just mentioned the use of surveys as one tool to get stakeholder feedback, and I mentioned our January opportunity for elementary staff to give us some. So this is a couple of screenshots from that, and this is going to be a way to collect our stakeholder feedback. When you're looking at it, I want to mention there's also a survey in draft for our secondary staff to be distributed a little later this year after we worked with the high school and middle school administrators on the best laid plan for dealing with that. And I also mentioned our Technology Department website. It's live now. So we have, at your convenience, I hope to take some time to browse what's there already, and significant information is available on our data privacy page, including links to all of our active agreements with our vendors. So I have just information, technology dumped on you for about 10 minutes. And I'll give you more, take a breath. I'll do my best to answer any questions you have related to technology integration that you may have.
I'll open it up to board questions. Thank you for the presentation, Sarah.
I just want to say thank you again for this abbreviated version of what you, we worked on Thursday. Thank you for doing that. And I just wanted to commend both you and Amy and Alan for recognizing that instructional technology is a support. It is not how we, the main driver in teaching children. So, you know, I think we hear a lot from parents about the concern about screen time and how much screens there's used in elementary classrooms, middle school classrooms, high school classrooms, all throughout. So thank you for keeping that as your focus. And I think the evaluating and informing our policies around screen time and cell phone use and all that is important going forward. So thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Dave.
Thank you. So welcome, Mr. McGuire. Appreciate it. Just a question here, you have one slide that talks about privacy agreement compliance. Could you unpack that a little bit, what that scope of that is or what you're looking at in that?
Sure, so the state of Connecticut has a law in which has several conditions in which a vendor should meet if we were to do business with them. And it really, it's about making sure that the district, not the vendor, owns the data, that there's a process for removing data that, or allowing staff and families to see that data. There's considerations related to how advertising is handled and how the vendor uses that data. So when we have a software program that may house information of student personally identifiable information and/or their work, we should have an agreement with them either in writing for the district or they need to take a complacency pledge with the state of Connecticut. So there's an online resource where we can check to first to see if they've taken the complacency pledge. And if they haven't, then I can reach out and get signed agreement. And if a vendor rejects the agreement or doesn't take the complacency pledge, we do not do business with them.
I would like to tell you how very excited I am to hear that. I've been asking that question since Mr. Silva was here. So somebody has finally got around to taking a look at this. This is fantastic. I mean, I think this is a very important effort. In my mind, if you're successful, instructional technology gets so baked into what we do here, it essentially disappears, which would be a fine goal, I think. I just had two quick questions actually for Alan. I'm just curious, we interviewed the last, or the Director of Instructional Technology previously as a board. We didn't do that here. If you could remind me why that was? And then do we have a job description or some other information for the board you could disseminate?
Are you talking about from Mr. McGuire's position?
Correct.
Yeah, this is, Mr. McGuire's position is in the Teachers Union.
Okay.
And we do have a job description.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation, all of the work, the enthusiasm too, appreciate. I just wanted to sort of capture, there is a lot in here and it's a lot of exciting stuff. And maybe just to give you a heads up that there might be people from the Communications Committee that want to talk to you about some of this at some point. I think policy may be interested in meeting with you at some point, just throwing out some ideas.
Trying to get an invite, thank you.
There's my point being, my point being, there are a lot of areas are touched in what you're looking at. And so I think, I think there's going to be some great stuff to come out of your looking forward ideas moving forward.
Thank you.
Thanks.
We don't have a lot of questions because it was a great presentation. Thank you. The board is very excited about this topic. We appreciate it and we appreciate the, the learning objective forward way that you've approached it as well as the I'm really liking the whole geeky laid out.
Good, I appreciate it, thank you.
Yes, yes, big fan.
No surprise.
I'll save that slide, bring it back in the spring.
Okay, thank you for that. Okay, so our only action item on this, Alan, is if you would send the board that job description, please. Okay. Thank you again for your time.
Thank you.
Have a great night. Discussion and update on Unified Sports, Mr. Mefridonia, Ms. Fine.
Thank you, everyone. Thank you for having me tonight. So I'm excited to give you an update on our Unified Sports program in the district. Going to start with a little bit of the history of Unified Sports, what it is, what the purpose is. You can see it started in 1968, along with Special Olympics. Can you hear me?
Is the clicker still there from when Tim was?
Oh, okay.
You can't see what.
I'm happy to wait.
No, please.
All right, okay. So Unified Sports started in 1968 with Special Olympics. The purpose was to empower students to engage and excel in sports through the promotion of social inclusion involving sports. Universally, there are 1.2 million individuals who participate in the program. It serves as one of the strongest youth leadership networks in bringing inclusive programs through the world and again involving use of sport. Nationwide, there's programming over 8,000 schools, including right here in Darien. The program started in Darien during the 2014-15 school year, so we're entering upon our 10th school year. It started with this grant bestowed on us by the C I A C, which was eventually taken over by the Board of Education in its full budget process. It's grown exponentially. Starting the program, I'm going to go to the next slide and show you some of the numbers and the data and some of our students involved. First start at the high school. You see there, there are three seasons of offerings, fall, winter and spring. The sports will vary by seasons, fall soccer, winter basketball, spring track and field. We have upped the programming to three days per week for practices. We have 36 athletes involved this past fall. We currently have 35 registered in winter with 25 data from last spring. You'll notice that the number is a little bit lower in the spring because of the number of, just the number of athletic offerings we have at Darien High School. There's just much more options, there's much more opportunities for kids to be involved in lots of different programming, so sports. So you see the numbers are a little bit lower in that season for that reason. It's staff with two coaches and support staff as well, you'll see there in the bottom. Members of our Unified Sports team are members of the Captain's Council, which meets during P L C time during the mornings once a month, which we discuss leadership opportunities for students. We discuss how they can communicate better with students, with coaches, inclusivity of all members of the team. So we really do some great stuff during the Captain's Council meetings with the Unified Sports captains, with all our captains seasonally during that P L C time. Next slide, we'll have the numbers at Middlesex. So we have a program at Middlesex, which started a few years after the program at the high school started. We currently have a fall-winter offering with the numbers of 29 students in the fall and 31 students that participate in the winter with basketball. They meet six times seasonally during each of those seasons. You see our staffing with a coach and support staff as well. It's a little different, we're looking at a spring season as well. We currently do not have one, but we're looking at one in the very near future. The middle school offering is a little bit different in that there's no outside tournaments. We'll see at the next slide that we have some outside tournaments that our high school students will participate in at the end of each season. There's currently just inter-squad scrimmages at the middle school level with no culminating tournament, like you'll see on the next slide. So we have, like I said, a lot of end-of-season celebrations. We compete with area F C X schools seasonally in both the fall, winter and spring at the high school level. We offer parent organized banquet, which we had last spring. Unified Sports athletes are recognized during a pep rally during the homecoming weekend in October. We have, like I said, inter-squad scrimmages as well. I want to end by inviting you all to our winter end-of-season tournament, which we held, I think, March 14th at Ludlow High School for our basketball, our basketball team. So hope to see many of you there. And with that, I will happily take any questions that any board member may have.
I will open it up to questions, but before I do that, I want to talk about how important this is for some of our students who historically had almost no extracurricular activities. And this is so meaningful for them to be able to do something after school with their peers. It is probably hard for most of us to understand how limited the social and extracurricular opportunities are for some of our kids, and this means a tremendous amount. So I'm just, I'll open it up to questions, but just wanted to put that out there. Dennis.
Thank you, Chris. So in your, in your discussions, you talked about adding a spring program at Middlesex. What does that entail and what would a timeline be for that?
So we're hopefully can get it off the ground for this spring, if not for the, for future years. It would probably involve, you know, mimicking what the high school does in the spring in terms of the sport being offered track and field and have some kind of offering for student athletes in that particular sport and probably inter-squad scrimmage. Right now, there's no middle school opportunity for students to compete against other schools like we do at the high school. It's a much more robust program at the high school level. So I think we'd start with the, you know, spring inter-squad scrimmage like we do with the other seasons in the middle school and then, you know, develop it from there.
John.
How many scrimmages and how many of these end-of-season tournaments are there per season?
So there's one end-of-season tournament, which involves, you know, F C X schools. And then we'll, you know, the practices that really serve as the inter-squad scrimmage during the course of the season at the high school. But there's one culminating activity held at, you know, an area F C X school that involves most, if not all, the F C X teams that have programs.
Is there any way we could do one of these under the lights?
We certainly can, absolutely, sure.
Thanks.
Yeah.
Katie.
There's no elementary participation listed, and I know that we used to at one point. Can you just comment on that a bit?
Can I just pick one up? And Chris and I, Chris and I have spoken about this also. It really started back in 21, 22, before that, we had a grant that was given to us, actually. It was Ox Ridge. I know we've spoken to the board before. The program was very different, did have about 20 students. They met one time a week for about 60 minutes and they did that, I think it was, I think it was, actually, I want to say it was from February to April. They had, we made our own culminating events. They actually went to, and I wasn't familiar, Floyd Little Field House was, parents came and families came and they were able to all meet there once a year. They did that in the warmer weather. And if you recall, a couple of years ago, we had a really culminating event over at the high school, at DHS outside. I think it's something that we looked at, how can we offer that opportunity to other elementary schools? I think we have to really focus on developing a program. It was really, actually, we had one year of a grant, you're only supposed to get one year of a grant, it's seed money. But apparently, we were very well-liked and they gave us a second year of a grant. It's a small fee that they give, but it's really startup money. And it was used to buy some, some t-shirts and different activities. But I think, and Chris and I have spoken about this, if we wanted to really look at available coaching or staff or interest or parents and how we could have a proper program at elementary school, it's something we should focus on. But up till now, it has just been that grant, one year, reduced grant, the second year at one school. So I think we should start to really look at the opportunity for that.
Do you have that in your plans to look at the opportunity for that already?
Not for this year, but we would start for next year.
That is a definitive plan.
Yes, I mean, Chris and I have spoken about it.
Okay.
Yes.
So next year at this time, we'll hear?
We'll have, we'll know about interest, about staffing, about students, about families and be able to present that, yes.
Okay.
If we can get it before then, we'll do that also. If we can collect that information this spring, we certainly can do that. It really wasn't that, I checked with Rich also. The, the cost was not enormous in terms of being able to have the program, run the program. I'm just looking at that and other aspects, transportation, what we could do. And also, again, it was one school, so it didn't involve, it was a late school. There were other schools that couldn't possibly come there at the time. So we'll look at that, but we can aim for doing this self-study earlier than later.
Thank you. That'd be great. Chris, is there anything we, is it a problem that we have less? I understand that there are barriers, just the kids are really active in the spring and it's a big season. But is there anything we can do to look at? Number one, is it a problem that there's a lesser number of partners? And number two, is there anything that we're thinking about doing if it is a problem?
Yeah, I mean, you know, the, the spring is, is by far our biggest, you know, you look at the offers you have in the spring. We have, I think, over 700 participants. We have, you know, 500 or so for the fall and the winter seasons. So it grows exponentially in the spring. We can look at, you know, possibly partnering athletic teams with our Unified Sports teams. You know, there is some overlap of practice, but there's probably some non-overlap of practice. So that could be not a possibility to look at, explore those, you know, avenues to have more kids involved in the spring. It's, it's, you know, it's, the spring is, it's a mad dash. It's April or May and it's over. And, you know, we have just, it's the most robust and most busiest time of the year. But we can certainly look at other opportunities for kids to get involved with the program. You know, through their, their normal, you know, through their athletic.
Thank you. How many captains are on the team?
I think this season there are six, if I remember correctly.
Thank you.
And those captains are a mix of the partners.
Yeah, they follow the same process, you know, for the selection of captains as it is, all the rest were athletics.
Follows the same process?
I'm sorry?
Follows the same process for captain selection, captaincy selection. Other questions? Thank you for being here this evening, really appreciate it. Thank you all, you both, for putting the information together.
Sure. Stay right here, if that's okay?
Oh, sorry, that's me. Discussion and possible acceptance of contemplated gifts for the Darien High School Athletic Department, Mr. Chris.
Right, so we have a couple of, I believe, contemplated gifts for your consideration tonight. The first is a donation from a football parent regarding, you know, for an amount of $2,000. The purpose would be to buy some new weight plates, which would be used by not just football team, but any athletic team using the weight rooms after school, phys ed classes as well. The second contemplated gift you see there is from the Blue Wave Booster Club. It is submitted by both the football and the swim team for a four-way tower strength lap pull-down cable row station. It's a pretty extensive machine. It would go again into the weight room and for use of not only these two teams, but as well as any athletic. It's a pretty extensive machine. It would go again into the weight room and for use of not only these two teams, but as well as any athletic team that's, you know, working out after school as well as any phys ed class as well.
With our thanks to the Blue Wave Booster Club and the Dunlap family, are there any questions about these gifts? Julie.
Kind of an obvious one, but I assume there's room for this.
There's room. We cleared some space out and we could clear some space out and have some, definitely some space.
With that, may I have a motion to accept the contemplative gifts for the Darien High School Athletic Department? That's Dennis, seconded by John. All those in favor? That is unanimous.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Christopher. Thank you.
Booster Club and the, and the Dunlaps. Okay. Presentation and discussion of proposed board master agenda for February through August 2024. Alan, before I turn it over, sorry, you have in the master agenda, this is a, this is a first read. We'll read it again a second time. Just to note that in our previous meeting, we had a couple of topics come up, including SRBI. That is put on for January. This master agenda is, is post-January. So, and there was one other that you were put on. What was that?
I can't recall, to be honest with you, but there was two. One of them was SRBI. It may come to me as I discuss this.
Okay. And a reminder to the board that this is how we sort of come up with our topics for the year or for the six months at a time. So if there are things you have on your mind and you want us to pursue, now is the time to bring them up. Again, it's a first read.
So these are somewhat fluid, but a couple of that I'll point out, we added in February 13th, just as a an update on the anonymous alerts, how that may be ruled out, communication and everything else that goes with it. And the transition committee update from Shirley. So that is in March. And you can see here, there's nothing special about these particular dates, but the board did commit that they would like to look at the discussion, explore, have a precursory discussion around late start times. So I just wanted to be honest about that process and sort of slipped it in there this, this sort of start of April. If you get into May, then it gets a wee bit, you know, towards the end of the year type thing. I think anything else is just sort of being lined up to what we have done in the past. Those were the main additions that we, modifications that have been made at this point. You can certainly, this is the first reading, so we can just have a read through it. And if you have anything you note or you would like to add or otherwise, um, certainly bring it to next meeting or let us know.
Great. So with that, I'll open it up for board comments. Robin.
Just on the, the late start, it would be helpful if at all possible, and I don't know if this is possible, to get some kind of a budget implication about what a change to a late start would be. And I don't know if it's possible to have something drafted on that before we have this as an agenda item.
So it depends on how you look at it. If it's just changing the high school and not doing anything else to the other schools, it's accessible enough.
Okay. And also what the cost of a study would be potentially if we chose that way of doing it.
Katie.
Just piggybacking on that concept, I, I do think that, you know, for the topics, I do, I do hope that they're thoughtful plans with, with multiple options of how things might look, you know, with one example being the late start time. Not just if we don't change anything, but also, you know, if there were a flop, you know, in addition to that, it seems relevant that a discussion that has, you know, come up over the course of several years from, from families in the district is the bus radius as well. And I'm wondering if that conversation should be a comprehensive one, you know, as we're talking about buses and start times and walking distances and you know, busing contracts, all of that. So I would just want to raise that point as well.
So just to be clear, certainly we'll try and frame some things, but this is an initial discussion that we're having to get like issues on the table. We can't come with a full-fledged. I don't think you're expecting that, but just contextually, you know, a full-fledged report or, but some thoughts and the initial discussion of how we may proceed and so on and so forth.
Just one, one additional kind of comment on the late start. I have heard feedback from parents that obviously there are a lot of different ramifications of doing something like this. So it would be helpful to get an idea of how many, for instance, before school, clubs and meetings take place. I know there are a lot of 7:00 AM club meetings at the high school and then the sports that are all after school, you know, that go from a certain time to a certain time that would end up being pushed later. So I think student government representatives, it would be important to have their involvement as well. And I know this is very preliminary, but to kind of consider all the different kind of.
So just a caution, we have to be careful not to talk about the agenda items because they're not warned as part of our agenda. So I, I hear you on that. These are great things to, to document and to, you know, you can put them in a memo closer to the time and start to talk about how to frame the discussion. And we can certainly talk about it. Thank you. John.
Yeah. And I, I thought this would be an initial discussion. I mean, we might go around and sense of the meeting might be, we're not interested. So I want to be careful not going, putting the cart before the horse on a number of these items. So that was just my, my comment there. There was some follow-up, I think, from the special ed meeting that I didn't know if we wanted to handle via memo and or there were some questions or another kind of just a follow-up agenda. So I put that out to those who had questions.
I'm gonna do a memo.
Those are going to be completed by this week for the board.
I'm sorry, the memo?
Yes, sir.
Okay, got it. So if there's questions after that, then we can, got it. Thank you.
And we can identify that there's a topic to delve into in more detail. Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else have something? Katie?
Just a question on, I noticed that the mental health updates were on several times and with parentheses sort of saying if not. So just a little clarification on, on the scheduling of that.
Katie, could you just point out the date for me?
It's March 26th or April 23rd. There's actually quite a few of them. Yeah, it's the first one. Yeah. And I didn't know if that was, is that because when the first, if the first one happens on the first or later date, that will then dictate the rest of that? Is that the idea?
Basically, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Dave.
Small nitpicky at this point, but in June 11th and then in July, we're, we're going to evaluations, including superintendent's evaluation. Just questioning the timing on that ahead of contracts. Want to make sure we get that worked on on a timely basis. That was it so far. I'm sure I'll have other comments.
So you, you do or do not like it on the 11th?
I, I don't remember what the expiry is of the contract and we have to do the renewals. And I see we have two actions on here for evaluation. One is the evaluation the 11th. And then I see at the board retreat, this is a board special meeting to be determined, discussion of performance. So I just don't know if those have to happen ahead or after. I know Dr. Adley's been flexible on when we get that, but I don't, makes sense to move that up. Just thought.
Okay.
I will probably have other thoughts on what to include. But that's it for now.
Okay. Greg.
I'm not sure if this is covered in one of these topics, but it's, it's come up a few times. It came up on Thursday. I think Sarah brought it up today again. It's been brought up a few times. And I'm also not sure if this is part of like the policy subcommittee, but or even part of maybe the strategic plan. But the topic is, it seems like we, as a district, are missing policy around cell phone utilization in the schools, and it's a topic that keeps coming up. I don't know if that's something that should be on this list as a separate agenda item or somewhere else. So just wanted to bring that up.
So yeah, it was covered a little bit in the, in tonight's tech presentation. Is there a plan? And it is in the strat plan explicitly. Do we have a timeline for when we're going to bring some of that work forward?
I will have to look more closely.
And it's just, it was just, it was just noted in the second semester that to evaluate, bring your own device, cell phone use by 10:00 tonight. So that's, that's.
So he's planning to review it in the second semester.
Correct.
So we probably would see something in the summer or.
Or even second semester.
Even second semester.
A massive heavy lift.
Okay. Okay. So Greg, it's, it's TBD, but it is here. Thank you for raising it.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Sarah.
To John's point about sense of the meaning, like Katie brought up the bus radius. Was it PDEC that you were thinking of? There's this, we talked about doing something about PDEC. Yeah. That just popped in. I mean, is that, should we take a sense of meaning about the bus radius? Like I think we definitely talked about that a bunch of times at the table. And I feel like either we're, we're closing that loop or we're opening that loop. So.
We closed the loop last year.
Did we close it?
Couple of years ago.
Not last, I think the year before, but yeah. Okay, just.
Well.
Not saying it can't be. I think we closed it because of COVID from my recollection, but.
Yeah. Okay. Julie, go ahead.
Kind of back to the conversation that was happening, happening earlier. I do think that some of these questions will organically come out of starting the conversation if we do around earlier start times.
Okay.
And not to have a conversation, but there are impacts of when kids are or aren't walking longer or shorter distances to and from school based on what your timing is of your day, for example. So maybe there's not all decisions, they're kind of connected or maybe would end up naturally leading conversations that happen together.
So that's a fair, perhaps it needs to lag a little bit, the start time. In the, or in that, the time of day may impact how people feel about walking.
Right. I think they'll probably, they might come up, be considered together, I guess, is where I was going.
Okay. All right. Anyone else? Okay. Dave, you had a, you sent us a memo. Did you want any follow-up on that? You were asking about just some operational controls and how to look at them. Are you interested in seeing that as an agenda item? Do you want a memo back?
Well, I think John just touched on that. Alan said he was working on something. And then the thought was if there's further questions that are, you know, there, there's questions based on the feedback and other board members are interested in asking some questions, I think after we have a chance to reflect on them, it will be the appropriate time to discuss, bring it up.
So you'd like a memo in response?
I think Alan said they were preparing.
Yeah, I thought that was, I thought that was in response to the initial questions from Katie and.
From Katie is what, what we were talking about, but also from you. Yes.
Okay.
Okay. All right. So we have, we are expecting two memos or maybe they'll be the same one. Same one.
Jill, just a clarification, that the response memo will be public document?
Oh, yeah.
By definition, yes.
Will it be posted? Why don't we? I don't know that answer. It's a good question.
Also, Mr. Grambling had a couple of questions that we were wanting to include also.
Yes, he did. He also asked about. Oh, thanks. Okay. Okay. Anything else on the agenda? All right. Personnel report. Marge.
We have a library media specialist and a Spanish teacher at Tokonik.
Any questions to Marge?
Are any openings remaining?
Two special education teachers at the high school and the lead replacement for a psychologist at Tokonik. And I'm going to say, and I know Barry's listening because he's texting me. These are all for teachers who left after the start of school. Otherwise, we would be fully staffed.
I'll open it back up for public comment. Sorry, I missed, I missed Robin.
One, just one question. On the Spanish teacher, it says that it's an end date of June 30th, 24. Is this just a temporary hire or?
So she's working on her certification. So that's why, you know, we did that vote. She's graduating hopefully in December. So she'll be certified.
I have a comment. Good evening. If anyone in person would like to participate, please come up to the podium. You'll have the three minutes. If anyone online would like to participate, please use the raised hand icon. There are no raised hands at this time.
Again, wishing everyone a happy and healthy holiday season. May I have a motion to adjourn? That is John, seconded by Julie. All those in favor?